Okay, so you don't know anything new on what we...
Thank you.
On one on one oh one. Thank you.
Hot off the press.
There you go. Okay, I'd like to call a planning board meeting of December fourth to order. It's seven oh one. And just for the visiting audience, my name is John Weiss, Chair of the Board.
Linda McCamick.
George Morris, Associate Member.
David Powell.
John O'Connell.
Martha Taylor, Town Planner.
Okay, so our first item of business is to approve the minutes from the last meeting, which is November twentieth, twenty thirteen, kind of an order, you know.
Motion to accept.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. So we have no appearances this evening. And on this list of old business, could I recommend that we, in terms of the bottom ones on the potential zoning items, that we put the draft site plan review after the medical marijuana, because I think it'll take some more time than the medical marijuana. So just shift those, okay? So let's go back up to one oh one Newbury Port Turnpike. And Martha and John, do you have an update? I know I drive by.
Nothing has been improved. A small amount of additional debris, fairly harmless, but its debris nonetheless has been deposited there without anything coming back.
Right.
The letter went out, as everybody knows, I'm sure, and it was sort of a victim, I think, of Doug's two-week vacation, because his plan was to make like a constable and hand it to the guy, serve him directly.
Right.
And I think he, obviously, he ran out of time before he had to go off. And they, it seems like the, the green slip that goes with a certified mail never got back. So, you know, where the hell is that letter is problematical at this point. So I told Susan and Doug that you had an email address for the guy and that his wife was really good about making sure he got the message.
Right, Susan.
And they haven't asked you if Susan has the message.
Yeah, she did.
Oh, she did, okay, good.
Yep, she came in yesterday and I gave her the email and as well as the mailing address that I've been using, because they used one oh one Newbury Port Turnpike and I don't know if things are going there or not.
I would, I, where would they receive it? I don't know if they've got a mailbox there.
Yeah, I don't know if they do.
I think there is a mailbox, but there's nobody there to sign it. I've been there a dozen times over the past month or two, two or three months, and I've never seen a human being there.
I thought that was the Drizdowski's mailbox. Do you think it's Angelo's?
I thought that he had his own there. I could be wrong.
Anyway.
I didn't look, to be honest.
So Susan, Susan was going to email him yesterday as well as, and maybe resend the letter, but as of yesterday, they had not gotten any.
They had not indicated they'd gotten it. They may have gotten it, but they never sent anything back.
And Angelo was supposed to have gotten in touch with Doug by yesterday with a schedule of steps he was going to take to comply, so we haven't gotten that yet.
Personally, I'm ready to totally lower the boom on him. You know, I hate to drop dimes to state agencies in principle, but this guy's been begging us to do that, and I, clearly, it's the only way that it's gonna, I think it's the only way that it's going to get solved. And that will certainly make him wish he was dead.
Well, let's see what happens. Maybe he will see the light of day and start to act normal. But he, you know, he, at this point in time, wasn't he supposed to have started blasting for the foundation? That was my memory.
Wasn't Doug already?
Oh, yeah, he said, he said that a number of times. There's been a number of dates for that.
So he's not?
No.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, John. Stormwater rules and reg, but you're up for the next two, John, and the subdivision rules and regs.
Okay, the, backing up from the second one, subdivision rules and regs, I have been through it as requested.
Right.
Unfortunately, my time is somewhat constricted at the moment and I have a day job, and I didn't get it to Gail until this past Monday. And she's gonna put the stuff through and it, even if she finished it today, there's no point in sending it to you, you know.
No, fine, so she'll, she'll, she'll email it sometime?
Well, she'll, you'll get email probably via Martha.
Okay.
We'll get it to Martha first and then you'll...
Probably by early next week or something like that.
I would expect so, yeah.
Okay.
I can't say for sure. Gail does not work for me, she's not an employee, so if her employer has a crisis, that's what she works on.
Okay.
Obviously, so.
All right.
So just as a footnote to that, if you recall, the subdivision rules and regs were in separate documents for each article.
Right.
And before I, I sent it back to John, I put it all together into one composite thing, and there were a couple of handwritten comments or edits that John had, so I've incorporated those as well. So what you get back will be one document instead of many.
Good.
Now, well, I, I annotated the original document. I felt it was far easier to say what we're changing than to try to imply what it was that it said before. So, you know, the, the two should be probably read the way I did it, which was side by side.
Okay, I understand that, sure. Okay.
Stormwater, I don't think there's anything terribly new on that, is there? You're about to send it to Joe.
Right, I've, I've picked up all of Ed's edits that we went over again last week. And the one thing that we'll still need to coordinate is if, you know, if, if the responsibility is being handed over to the Conservation Commission, just getting all of those changes in there and coordinating with the bylaw.
Right, and then we, we need to figure out exactly when we want to do that, and I don't know all the steps that needed, need to be taken in order to accomplish that.
Vote for the changing of solving, yes.
There's certainly a town meeting, right, right, but is there, are there steps that we need to take prior to the town meeting?
There, I mean, the bylaw's gonna have to go through the whole, you know, public hearing process and all that kind of stuff.
And will we do the public hearing or will the ConCom do that?
I would suggest it be both, but...
It, it could be joint.
That's a good idea.
And I want to talk to Ginny about sort of process, because if we have the public, John wanted to have the public hearing earlier.
Prior to the town meeting.
Prior, prior to the town meeting.
Well, prior to the end of...
Oh, right. Well, town meeting is May.
Is May, but we'd be adopting something in May, or the Board would be adopting something in May, which actually isn't reflected in our current bylaw. So I think there are just some steps that need to be worked out with Ginny.
Okay.
It's one of those things that in the private sector, it is no problem at all, but given that we're a public agency, it's a monumental problem, apparently. In the private sector, you just simply do it, but the way it goes.
Yeah, and, you know...
Can't be helped.
The only other option would be to actually, and don't jump, you know, keep it, keep it as sort of nominally the planning board's responsibility, but that they would designate the Conservation Commission to actually be the...
Once we get up to, and, so we keep it as our responsibility until we get to the town meeting? Is that what you're suggesting?
Potentially, I don't know, I mean, probably best I should talk to...
See what I'm saying, I mean, I, I don't mind being the, taking it along the way as long as we understand the ConCom is taking it over, if that's easier for some people to do, that, I think that, I mean, what, is there anybody who thinks that?
It's a fairly benign change to it zoning-wise, so if, if we put it out as in conformance with present zoning prior to the town meeting, we're certainly going to have zoning changes next year. At the very least, we better do a medical marijuana thing.
Right, actually, I'm re, just rethinking this, it's not zoning, it's a general bylaw.
Yeah, it's a general bylaw. It's not a zoning change.
Oh, it's not, oh, that's right, it's a recognized by law.
It still has to go before town meeting, but it doesn't, it doesn't have to. It doesn't have to go through the zoning process.
Right.
So...
That make it easier?
Yes and no.
Oh, yeah.
So let me talk to Ginny about the steps and how we dovetail all of this appropriately.
Okay. Medical marijuana, let me just lead in a little bit, and the, the group that's been assembled for this is George and Martha and myself. We met ten days ago or so and talked about moving forward. George has just, in fact, given me some preliminary thoughts that he's taken from this, as you know, he's, he's been our leading, what would you call it, not advocate for the issue, but leading interest of the, on the issue, more than anyone else. But what we did come out with was that we believe that we need to have a workshop in January, in, at which we would be talking about the, the law, what it means for the Commonwealth and what it means for the town of Newbury. And we talk about our moratorium, we talk about what we know about it at this point in time. It's not clear whether or not at the workshop we would have preliminary potential sites or we would simply say, you know, here are some options to be considered and we'll want to take your input. So we haven't thought that through. But one of the things we did think through that we want to do is do a site visit to a facility, and there are some up in Maine, and so we're, we're going to get some information about them, and we'll do that visit, the three of us, in mid-December, so that if we do have a workshop and people say, well, what are these things like? We at least will say, well, we have visited one or two in Maine, and here's what they look like, and here's the...
That makes very good sense.
And here's the way they function, et cetera, et cetera. So, so I think, I feel pretty good about that approach. George, you wanna?
That's what we discussed, I think we have to develop how we want to proceed, whether it's an overlay or some other, you know, special permit within districts. I think that's important to find out.
Right, and I, I must admit that when I started reviewing all the information that both George and Martha had sent out, I at first was negative on the overlay district. You, you are all familiar with it, you just take your, your own set of conditions and all the aspects of it, and you overlay it on certain sections of the town. And I just want, it was thought that we just say, well, here's where you want it, and, and the conditions and all that are appropriate for that part of town would, would be appropriate. But I am much more open to both of these things right now. I don't know what the right one is, but it seems to me that an overlay has a lot, a lot of merit to it.
Yes, there's more study.
Yeah, so I don't know, Martha, do you want to add anything?
No, I think that covers it.
Well, yeah, but certainly, I would think wanting to separate it from schools.
Oh, yeah.
If for no other reason than the appearances of it.
Those, that, one of the things about an overlay district, you, you write the district criteria and then you say, you know, and that's geographically where it's going to be, and you, and all of these procedures and criteria, et cetera, apply to this issue wherever it is.
Sure.
So...
And that's one of the things we started to look at, because there's supposed to be a certain distance from places where children congregate on a regular basis or an organized basis. So looking at areas like the Byfield...
Business Park?
Yeah, the Commercial Highway A, that's very close to the library and the playing field there.
So we have to measure that and see really what that means, even though it seems like a good location.
And I'm puzzled by...
Eight-year centers and schools.
Yeah, I'm puzzled by a great deal of this. We're talking about medical marijuana, we're talking about prescription drugs, essentially, okay? We're not talking about recreational, we're not talking about a store where you can go and simply, if you have enough money, buy something. Highly controlled entry requirements at the state level to be upwards of half a million dollars, et cetera, et cetera. I, I, you're talking about looking at places, are you also going to be looking at the whole business of raising it as opposed to just selling it?
Because it's allowed to be cultivated here, yes, we are.
Because that would seem to me to be maybe more of a possibility, given we are a rural area, than in some ways, and the most obvious corridor is, is ninety-five, anyway.
You'd worry about bootleg harvesting.
Well, you know, I mean, I think, in all honesty, we're suffering from sort of media hype, in the sense, I, I don't think any of these issues are issues that, that we would face in this community.
Yeah, I, I think you're, you're right. It's just that in anticipation of a workshop and having public discussion about it, I just think that we need to know everything we can.
Sure, no, I, I would agree.
This may be one of those situations where the appearances trump the realities, because everything Dave said, I think, is totally correct, but I think you'll find a lot of voters will be scared to death by the thought.
Some will, and some will not.
The more palatable it would be to the superstitions, right?
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's true, and, anyway.
And in any case, we still have to be mindful of the Department of Public Health regulations and, and, you know, how that factors into what we do for zoning, so...
Right. Okay, any, anybody want to add anything to that? So then that, I think, brings us to the, the issue of the site plan review, which I have here, and as I said the last time, I was so thankful that you guys, Kathleen, Linda and Martha, got together to do this, and I really applaud your work in putting this thing together.
I think the product is pretty damn good, to be honest with you.
Martha, give a copy of it, I don't.
I may have a copy here.
Yeah, I'll have a copy on one off.
An extra copy.
I know, huh?
No, go.
I took all my papers out of my pocket.
So let's wait, let's wait for...
Don't look over your shoulder.
For, who else needs a copy? Do you have a copy?
George doesn't have a copy. Make two, please, Martha.
What'd you say?
Two.
George needs one.
Two copies. So we just wait until we get them back in? We apologize for the pregnant pause to the television audience.
We should have a camera clearly posed over the Xerox machine. Either that or, you know, you play interval music.
That's a good thing.
Right.
I didn't, but Kathleen is studying for her test or has her test tonight, I forget which one it is, but...
Or another one, right?
But it's, I think this is the final, final thing.
The big one.
This is it.
Oh, this is the biggie?
I think so.
Is she done after this?
I think she is.
Yeah, oh, yes.
I think she...
I think she's going to be out there terrorizing the labor market.
The labor market and look, and trying to figure out what she does with the rest of her life.
Right. Well, I think, isn't it now, these days, isn't one supposed to have at least three to four distinctive careers in the course of one's life?
You know, I, it's certainly, I think it looks like that is a new paradigm for young kids and all people younger than us, that they all have these...
That is almost everybody in my case.
That they all have these careers, but I have a feeling that that's not true with us. You were a lawyer, a lawyer, a lawyer.
And Navy.
Navy, well...
Maybe lawyer, lawyer. Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap up my second one heading into my third. I've had two, definitely one.
I can't count, so there you go.
Yes, ma'am?
The machine went to sleep, it's worrying us.
Okay, you can stop working, I, I can...
Well, no, um, do, do, how about if we do ears, our reports or something?
All right, let's do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There is no ZBA till tomorrow night.
Well, the Board of Selectmen, were you at the last selectmen's meeting, Martha?
No, I wasn't.
And I wasn't either, but the only thing I, I now know is what I read in the paper written by, which, which talked about some shifts that the selectmen are thinking of. Interesting that we had talked about the same thing last meeting, about the Capitol Planning Group, or the Capitol...
Planning Committee.
Planning Committee, in terms of the threshold of what, what things they look at, is, I guess now it starts at ten thousand dollars, and I think that they want to raise that.
To fifty.
To fifty and perhaps, I, I'm not sure, were you at the meeting?
No, but I read it in the paper today. I think there's a state requirement for twenty-five, extreme suggestion.
Right.
And the Board was thinking of going to...
And perhaps a restructuring of the Board to include some others, so, so that was kind of interesting. And aside from that, I think that was the major thing that they did at the last meeting.
Well, they also had the classification hearing.
Oh, yes.
So they set the...
Oh, so they set the tax rate.
They, well, yeah, the tax rate has been set, and they, they confirmed that it's one tax rate for all.
Even though they can do classification, but they chose, they choose not to.
They choose not to.
So I didn't know you could choose not to.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of communities don't, are doing what we're doing, having a single one. Amesbury is, pardon? Amesbury as a city is, has a single rate.
Every now and then, there's a big kerfuffle about that.
Well, you know, and it all depends, like, I'm sure a town like Burlington or something like that must have classification, because they have such a...
If we had tried it, they did do it, and then I think they went back to the same.
Right, I think George is...
Yeah, they was very...
That's five years, it didn't work out too.
Right, yeah.
And they went back.
Well, okay, so the ZBA did not meet, Board of Selectmen, MVP C?
Oh, the only thing that I can report specifically on is that we are moving ahead with plans for some traffic schemes in, at the intersection of Sunset Boulevard and Plum Island Boulevard.
Right.
To deal with issues of, you know, parking, traffic.
So those are in design, do they, can they potentially get money for those, or how do that work if you want to implement it?
Well, okay, there is a program which is funded by the state through the regional planning agencies for local technical aid or advice or whatever the A stands for, it's known as LTA.
Assistance, I think, assistance, I think.
Assistance, right, yes, but sometimes I think it's more advice than perhaps assistance, but anyway. And so this can come under that. Essentially, what they will do is provide us actually with something that normally you would get from, you know, essentially from an engineering firm, you know, the boards.
Right.
And since that is part of what we actually receive free from the commission, that means that we're going to get fourteen hours of work, which is a going rate is probably worth, what?
Well, hundred bucks an hour.
Yeah, I'm going to say fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars. And that will enable us also, frankly, to, 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 you know, to sort of be involved in the process, because they did the traffic study, so their traffic study is, is leading directly into this. And then later on, we're going to be looking, I think, at the overall parking issues in, on Plum Island, which are considerable, to say the least.
Which, so, so they have money for design, and then how do they go about looking for money for execution and for construction?
That would be Chapter Ninety money, probably, I would think.
I would say that, that would be one possibility, depending on what else, you know, we have a fixed...
Unlikely that the town would...
Right, and we have a fixed...
...forward with funds, am I right? Or is it possible?
Well, I think, okay, since it's, since it's a highway issue mainly, then they could opt to do it through Chapter Ninety funds, which essentially means that we spend the money and then it's refunded by the state.
Right, right.
There might be some additional monies required and it'd be up to the town, but one of the kinds of things that, that came up in this study, for example, and I haven't been out there, maybe if we end up early tonight, I should go, some of the lights out there were turned off as part of, or either that or they died and were not renewed as part of our sort of economy measures twelve months, twenty-four months ago. And that's compounding the issue in terms of safety. So there are those kinds of issues, which has raised, you know, another one to the effect that, in fact, many of our lights in town are very inefficient, and I have a feeling that we're probably spending a great deal of money for electricity and we're not getting much lumen back. So these kinds of issues, they can help us with.
All right, and the ConCom?
Nothing other than what we've already discussed, that's the biggie at the moment.
Okay.
I gotta ask Martha if we ever, I failed to ask if we ever got the corrections back from Tom and the engineer on the, that daycare place.
Oh, going on...
Sixty-seven, sixty-nine, yeah. Martha, do you know, do we ever get stuff back from Tom, the engineer on...
I haven't seen anything.
You haven't seen anything?
I don't know if anything came into Susan or Doug.
Okay, well...
Oh, I got a question on, on, speaking of the MVP C, have we gotten a proposal from the engineers for Byfield Center as yet?
No, that's one I, I need to follow up with them, because I haven't gotten anything yet. I did, I did put in the request.
Yeah.
Was this, like, drainage?
For the drainage, yeah.
We got to redo it for the drainage.
Because, you know, the other thing, talking about that for a moment, in the last two weeks, I have narrowly missed being wrecked by various people driving in and out of a parking lot at the post office. And I'm really getting to the point that we really have to try to do something about that, and I think essentially we've dragged our feet, because I think we can, not we, the planning board, but I think the town can do something. But the planning board, I think, can push, because it is, you know, a, a really negative situation in terms of, of Byfield Village. And there are some things that could be done, and it's just a question of time before we have a major...
Well, do we have a design that everyone has signed off on?
We have a design, it's been before the selectmen, and it's the one that's being developed.
But unfortunately...
When you say developed, mean that, that this design would be constructed?
It was, well, it was brought up, it was, the design was taken to twenty-five percent, so they're working on a hundred percent.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, it didn't deal with this particular issue, right?
It does in the sense that it, it defines the boundary of the parking lot and...
I thought it had curbs and curb and around that property, but I, I only saw it two years ago.
Right, but it, it, it really doesn't, I mean, it frankly doesn't, doesn't deal with it. It, you know, might end up with you knowing more clearly where the road is as opposed to the parking lot, but that's about it. It's not going to, you know, essentially re-channel traffic, anyway.
Well, if he just demarks it as opposed to, makes it impossible to treat the parking lot as a wide spot in Main Street, it's sort of like, right now, it's sort of like the old shopping centers where you could, you didn't have to follow the white lines. You could go across, across country if you wanted to.
But the real issue...
And that led to all kinds of problems.
No, the real issue, John, is that people park on Central Street, the central, it has two parking areas, one on Central Street and one on Main Street. People park on Central Street whose ultimate destination is either Georgetown or somewhere south, and so they have two choices, they either back up into traffic, right? Because what they're going to have to do is go down to the intersect, the T intersection and take a left, or they drive across the parking lot.
Right, they drive across.
And either way, if you are, you know, making an ordinary maneuver, and I've gotten into the habit now, if I'm going to Georgetown, of parking on the Main Street side, and that way you, you, you back up essentially and, and you're not, you know, you can turn around. But even when you do that, people come from all directions, it's amazing. I mean, you know, it's, it's like you're supposed to have a three hundred and sixty-degree mirror, it's wonderful.
Are there any faded sideline lines painted there? I've seen some.
Well, there are parking bay lines and there is, there is a curb line which...
Is there a curb line?
I don't know, but it's so faded, you...
It's faded because people drive over it all the time. It's faded, because people drive over it all the time, yeah.
Just replace that one.
Okay, gotcha. All right, let's get to the site plan review. So I think we, I, I wouldn't mind going, well, how, how does the board want to go through this? Anybody have any preferences? I was thinking page by page, just to make sure.
Sure.
Way to do it.
Okay, so, comments on the first page?
Okay, I have one, rather major. Line twenty-eight, or twenty-seven and twenty-eight. I'm, I would like to ask those who, well, okay, Kathleen isn't here, but the committee, why they came up with the idea that there would be no, essentially approval by the planning board of level one?
The first draft actually did have review by the planning board without public hearing.
Yeah.
So it was a sort of abbreviated process. But it was changed to, to simplify it and just have it be staff review.
Well, my sense is that this raises a real issue for me. And that is that this is a bylaw which is essentially the purview of decisions by the planning board, and that this should not be, and not for any, you know, reason that has to do with Martha, for heaven's sake, but this should not be a staff decision in terms of where the decision comes from. It might be a staff recommendation, or even drafted by the staff, but I think it has to be, must be, actually a, a planning board issued written decision, which is voted on. Because if it's not, you create all kinds of problems immediately, in my estimation. And that is, you know, essentially, you create a situation where people's decision can be questioned, there can be questions about, you know, bias, all kinds of stuff. And also to take the planning board out of the equation when it's a bylaw in zoning, I think, is just very bad practice.
The, there are several, I, I think you're right in, in, but, but at the same time, I do know that there are many administrative ways of dealing with minor issues in planning function. And this could be one of those. I, I guess I, I don't mind telling you, I think I've always had some questions about this level one. And my questions are really primarily that the prior, prior document takes us to, I think, twenty-five hundred square feet. And so my question is, I guess for the board, and I think David, you, because I think you, you're appreciative of this, why, in your all minds, do you think that we need a level one? And why do we need to differentiate between the two? And what is it in the town that's going on that gives you the idea that we really need this? I mean, I guess mostly to Martha and to Linda, but. I mean, that's.
Well, I'll say.
By the way, don't, don't take.
If you wanna think for a minute, I got a question I could ask, if that helps.
No, I can, I can answer.
My, 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 don't, I'm just probing here, I'm not necessarily strongly against it. I just would need to know why, why it is that we need to do this. What, what is it that's going on in the town historically? Or that we foresee in the future that makes us believe that we need to have site plan review for this level of project?
I'll say actually, and I, I said this to, to Linda and Kathleen as we were going through it, the more, the more I looked at it and puts, put it together, I was asking the same questions, actually. I mean, we've, we've kind of created something which is more stringent than what we have now. So I think that if we do go ahead, we, we need to think very carefully about what, you know, what comes out of it, what the benefits are of doing this.
And, and I'm happy to, to, to do that, if, but I'm, I'm not aware, and that's why I'm asking you all, because you've got more experience than I in, in the town, of, of the, these kind of smaller projects, not only in size, but also in terms of the, the structures, but also a small number of parking areas being changed. And alterations to traffic patterns, which I think normally flows from one and two of the criteria, and any changes in dumpsters and lighting, which would also, you know, change because of the smaller number. And maybe I'm, I just, I don't know, David, you, you, when you first put this thing, put your ideas forward, you had several levels, so what, what was it in your mind that you were interested in?
Well, largely that, that, in fact, there are projects where the effect on a buttes or a neighborhood, even of quite minor changes because of the nature of areas in our town, like for example Byfield Village, or Plum Island, can create a situation where you essentially want to make sure that all the aspects of a project are reviewed, not with the notion that necessarily, you know, there're going to be problems, but to make sure that there aren't, so that you get out ahead of things. And you don't want to subject a minor change to the kind of expense, time, public hearing, da-da-da-da. It seems to me that a minor change might.
I would concur with that.
That's why we didn't want it to come back to the planning board.
Well, when I say come back to the planning board, what I'm saying is that simply, the way I would see it, is that it would be administered, and the process would be, you know, in, 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 in charge, the person in charge would be the town planner and the other parties named. And out of that would come essentially a recommendation, which would be drafted in a written form, and we would simply review it, and in most cases, obviously, I think we would simply vote to endorse it. But perhaps we, we might have questions. I'm not talking about taking it to a, a process beyond that. I'm just saying that if this is a bylaw which comes under zoning, then I think it important that, essentially, that the board make it an official act of, of approval.
But it's, take, take the, one of the things to, to do that would be to, or one of the things that's been done here is you change, the, the recommendation is to go from twenty-five hundred square feet building to a two thousand square foot building. And then the differential is, in the level one, is between seven hundred and fifty square feet, which is, I'm not, I'm not sure what that is, do, do you know what I mean, it's not, there's almost nothing being built today that's seven hundred and fifty square.
No, it would be an addition.
It's an addition, lots of additions.
But no new construction, I mean, but in addition.
Right.
Right. A freestanding building, no, I agree with you. I'm not that comfortable in being the official body to say grace over something where we didn't get the input and have an opportunity to cross-examine. Would it make any sense that we leave this as it is, with staff, town staff, making this decision? But part of the decision-making process would be, if in that judgment, I think it would make more sense to run it before the planning board, then refer it to the planning board, and then give, in this document, give the town officials, the paid staff, the right to do that. There's some cases where a small thing like this makes, you know, it's totally benign. And there's other cases where something small could generate, you know, all kinds of problems, depending on its location and the kind of stuff that goes on there.
In your, when you were looking at the various other towns and cities, and they had the various levels, did they go down this small?
I'm trying to remember now.
Yeah, the one, the Groton one that I had went down this small.
That go down.
I, I would say this is smaller than average, seven fifty is.
A lot of them were around, say, a thousand.
Yeah, a thousand and up is, thousand, two thousand is what I'm used to seeing.
And the original suggestion was five hundred, and, and the three of us agreed that that seemed to be a little too, too small, so we raised it to seven fifty.
Because, I mean, I will say that generally, as I've gone through the document, I think it is a terrific document, and I might have a couple of questions here and there. But this is really the only one that I'm not certain of, and I just, because I don't. I mean, I think that one of the reasons, I mean, let's go back to why we were doing this, is that we had some information from our town council, it said they thought, he thought that our document wasn't up to snuff, and it needed revision.
Well, I think they suggested, didn't they? Didn't Bobowski suggest?
It was Mark Bobowski's.
A multi-level thing.
Uh, he, no, no, not necessarily.
No. No, not necessarily. He just said, your, your site plan review provisions are antiquated.
Antiquated.
And, and so the, the rest of the documents is a great elaboration and further definition very well on most of the stuff, although I still want to go through the details, but this is the only thing that, you know, i- i- if you were to tell me, Martha, oh, well, we've had ten projects that have come through that should have gone through site plan review, that have had disastrous impacts on the town, then, then I could respond, but I, 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 I don't see it. Or am I incorrect in that?
No, I mean, we've had three, one of which we know has been problematic.
Yeah. Hopefully that's over.
One which hasn't started yet.
Oh, but no, here, my other question is, have there been projects that have gone through the normal building approval process with SAM that we believe would have turned out better had they gone through site plan review? I mean, that, that's really the question.
So anything under, up to this date, under twenty-five hundred square feet?
Would have, would have just been approved.
Right.
By SAM, so, so, so are there, are there?
Unfortunately, most of them are residential.
Right. So, so you see what I'm, what I'm trying to get at?
I do, I do.
Uh, so if that's not working, and SAM doesn't think it's working, then I can see us doing something like that. But I, I, it just seems, I'm not, I, I'm repeating myself, but.
So you want to get rid of level one altogether?
I don't know, I'm not sure yet. It's the major question I have on the document. Well, I, I'm looking for reasons to support it, to be, to be honest.
I don't know what's been built under twenty-five hundred square feet. I mean, we don't get that, that many requests for commercial, do we? So.
Well, okay.
And I'm trying to think of.
But we do have a lot of small lots on Route One that might, you know, like the daycare place, I mean, that brought in other things, but.
Plus, I'm wondering, okay, and, and the, the danger of this is, is, you know, naming names, which you're not gonna do. But we had a circumstance about a year, year and a half ago, where somebody wanted to, permission to have a home business, and essentially to convert the use of an existing outbuilding to a use that was not permitted in the, in a residential area, okay? The size of that building would come within this, in other words, it would be, yeah, it would be under two, it would be right around two thousand square feet. There was absolutely no review of that at, at any planning level at all. It went straight to the selectman and was permitted with no input from a planning point of view. And so I think it's those kinds of things that you, where you don't necessarily have to look at a straight kind of new project. Somebody, for example, adding a workshop to an existing house or to an existing site, quite would well perhaps have something that's fifteen hundred square feet. You know, my own studio is about that, depending whether you figure the, the ground floor, or the, or the upper floor, or both of them together. It was an existing building, and I changed the use in the days when that was relatively easy to do.
In thinking this thing through, is this something that occurs in Byfield Village and in along Route One? Or, or it also happens in the AR districts? Where does this hap- does it happen on Plum Island?
Well, it could if one of the commercial, and one of.
Or, or a multifamily, if they decided to build a four-unit structure out there.
Yeah. But also, you know, a lot of the stuff that, that is happening, is happening in existing locations where there is a change of use and a sort of what I would call a, a creeping construction. Another, something that has happened in Byfield Village is that a business that was permitted there for, to do one kind of thing is now doing additional stuff, which is actually specifically prohibited on our bylaw for Byfield Business District. And, and what do you do if there's no review process? If there's no process that essentially sort of says, well, you know, what are you gonna do?
Was this an expansion of an existing business, or was it just an existing business that changed its use?
It was essentially, well, it was an existing business that, that underwent a number of changes, none of which were regulated, put it that way. And, and all I'm saying is that something.
But they, but, but they didn't.
But it would have tripped this, it would at least have come to the.
Because it expanded its footprint.
No, because it changed the use.
But if they didn't ask for a change of use, this wouldn't have.
This doesn't apply.
This wouldn't apply.
Well, okay, but I, I, yeah, I think they also changed.
Unless they expanded, then it would apply.
If you expand, or you build something new.
Well, what they essentially did was to, to, to change the, the parking arrangement.
John, what do you think about this stuff?
Right. I'm still thinking. I made a suggestion a moment ago, and that's as far as my thinking has gone, that, I'm, I'm, for example, the Board of Health does usually, I think they do, sign off on septic systems. But Debbie does all the work, okay? The building inspector never, in any town, nobody is looking over his shoulder. That's not a, a group decision, that's purely his. And it, there it has to be, because he's got documents this, this big.
Right.
That he has to review against. I think I'd like to see, leave it up to the judgment of the people that are doing it, so that it is by exception that we get to it, for the small ones.
There is an appeal process.
Well, that's essentially the way it, you, you've got it now.
Yeah, as it comes to the planning board, right?
Right now, the, the way, the way it's set up, am I right, it comes to SAM, somebody comes to SAM.
Right.
And SAM makes a determination as to whether they need to go.
Right.
To site plan review.
To site plan review. But one thing that's not clear is that, can he simply say, even if it's a small project, between seven fifty and two? I, I, I just don't remember, can he simply say, no, already?
No.
That's what he says, is no.
That's what he does now.
That he turns it down, and then it.
That's what he does now.
That he turns it down and then it.
But what, what he's saying is that, no, you're either one of two, right? You're either level one or level two.
It, under the, under the new one.
Under the new one.
If it, if it, if it meets any of these applicability criteria.
Size.
Right, cause right, what he does right now, if somebody comes to him, he'll go through the criteria and site plan review. And make a determination whether it triggers site plan review or not. And if it does, based on the criteria that we have outlined in the zoning, it then comes to, to us.
The, um, so the criteria are, you know, the size and expansion. And then the parking space issue. Can we, just give me some informa- about the parking spaces? Right now, we've got ten? If you increase it by ten, you're subject to site plan review with twenty-five hundred square feet. I can see going down to two thousand square feet, reducing that to eight, which is what you've done. That's about the amount of parking that you need per space. So I guess the, uh. Between three and five. I'm just trying to think, that's between nine hundred land square feet and fifteen hundred land square feet.
I mean, the space it takes to create parking space, yeah, three hundred pounds, three hundred square feet to the car.
Yeah, right.
What's, what's?
As opposed to before, it was three, I mean, at ten, it's three thousand square feet. And that's, that's a relatively large amount of pavement. But nine hundred's not that much, right, you know, I, that's all I'm.
Well, there again, it's, uh, it's something that could be no big deal at all, it just walked right through. If it's something simple, benign, not gonna bother anybody, off you go.
I mean, the reason we have this here is primarily because of stormwater, right? And, I mean, parking spaces?
Uh, well, parking spaces are negative stormwater wise.
Right.
But by the same token, we, we sort of have to have them, you know?
Right, but I mean, I, I would imagine that that's the reason why it's in the site plan review to begin with is that. I mean, when you increase the amount of parking by ten, you are adding significantly to the stormwater runoff and you've got.
Well, you are, but, um, yeah. I'm not sure that's the genesis of these particular rules. Because this looks exactly like subdivision rules and regs from twenty years ago. And that we didn't care about stormwater then.
Could be.
But if you have an increase in square footage on a commercial operation. You almost have to have an increase in the parking spaces. Because one follows the other.
Right, but see, right, but these are three, these are all separate criteria. And I assume if, if, if any one of them is met, one or more. So if you are just expanding the parking, you would be subject to site plan review.
Right.
If you are just altering the traffic flow, you'd be subject to site plan review. Now, it is true, John is right, that numbers three, four and five, if you're doing one or two, three, four and five happen.
Right. However, you may be doing neither one or two. But let's say you've got a two-story building that is right now a restaurant on the first floor. And the family that owns it, mom and pop live upstairs. Somebody else buys it that doesn't live there, mom and pop go to Florida. The guy says, hey, I got a building here, I'm gonna put seat, uh, tables upstairs. Now he's doubled the capacity of the restaurant in round figures. Without any change in square footage of building. But by doubling the capacity, restaurants usually go by table or by seat rather.
Right.
Not by square footage. They go by seat.
Right.
As far as parking requirements go. So au- automatically you've kicked up the parking without doing anything as far as building goes.
Doesn't SAM pick that up? SAM would pick that up when the, when the guy comes in to do his, to do his work.
You'd expect so because there's a change of use for a portion of the building.
And he, and he would say, well, you know, uh, alright, you're adding now hypothet- doubling, whatever, doubling.
Hypothetic, probably not quite.
Doubling the capacity of the restaurant, you need to add.
So you're gonna need X number of parking spaces, based on our zoning, I mean.
And parking spaces is the, is the limiting factor on many businesses, am I not right? Uh, Linda, as far as expansion goes, people would love to expand, except if they expand, they wipe out parking spaces. And they've shot themselves in the foot.
See, we have a point three per seat. Parking requirement for a restaurant.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So one for every three seats, I mean.
Yeah, right, yeah, so a table of four, you have one of the third parking spaces. But, but I mean, you know, that's a, a high level. Okay, let me suggest something here, uh, two things. One is I would suggest we up the number one minimum to a thousand square feet. Because I'm looking at stuff I have here and nobody goes any lower than, than a thousand square feet.
I'm good with that.
Who isn't sort of, you know, so I would suggest a thousand square feet, uh, would be the minimum. And I, I guess my point simply is, I'm not suggesting that we subject. The decision made by a staff group to sort of second guessing and modification and all the rest of it. What I'm suggesting is, is I think this is perhaps, and help me here, George, it's not a lawyerly thing, but I think it's a process issue. And that is, I think, even if it's just a sort of pro forma situation. There should be a written decision prepared by the staff which comes to the board and the board votes on. Even if we just read it and do it. Because we're the authority, not the staff.
The way I've seen this done in the past is that, um, a board will designate, um, uh, staff to do X, Y and Z. And then the staff reports every two weeks on, here are the things that I've done. And you can see it, I mean, it, I'm not saying that Martha still wants to do this, but, but you can, you, she, she or he report, reports on it. And says, um, I approved these kind of projects because, and I had input from all these sources. And so you have it, it's, it's post facto. But you get this stuff on a regular basis. And you begin to see how that person is making decisions and in effect you are. I guess acquiescing in a way, because you've delegated, you're saying, you're acting in our behalf. Is that right, George?
It's pure delegation, the question is, can you delegate?
Well, I did, I have a question in.
I don't know, I assume you can.
I have a question into, um, to, to Jenny, who is gonna run it by Mark Bobowski, since he's the one who's most familiar to see. Whether in fact that can.
I mean, the other thing is that we have enormous trust in, in Martha, but what happens if Martha leaves? Then what do we do?
I'm gonna say, we, we have to remember.
Rewrite it.
That we're writing bylaws, you know, essentially you have to assume you're writing a bylaw.
Without personalities involved.
Without personalities and, and for all time.
Right, that's right.
Okay, and, and that's the, the only reason for me sort of.
I agree.
Digging my heels in about this, is I simply think that. It's partly also frankly, in a small community. You have a greater chance that there's going to be some pushback. Than in a large community where people are rather used to, you know.
Regulation.
Bureau, uh, bureau, excuse me, bureaucrats making decisions.
And, and also a highly professionalized bureaucracy too, uh, which is one of.
That's a good point.
And I had a conversation just last night at, um, MVPC, I had a function and we were talking about Lawrence. And I asked a question of, uh, a young man who works in a federally funded project in Lawrence. And I said, well, do you have a code enforcement committee? And he kind of grinned and I said, I, well, I presume that means you don't. Now, a code enforcement committee is the building inspector, the fire department, the police department, the plumbing, electrical. You know, the whole nine yards, right? Um, and they would review all kinds of stuff that comes in front of them. Um, and they have the power to do all sorts of things through the Board of Health, whatever. And he just looked at me and he said, well, let me just tell you that, um, and I don't know whether this is still true. But the building inspector was the nephew of the mayor. And I mean, that was the end of the conversation, right? So, you know, and I'm not saying that's true in Newbury, but.
Right, oh, can I make a?
I will say that for people that come before governments in general with a proposal to build something. They would by far rather deal with the staff than deal with a board. Because, you know, looking from my perspective, the board is a total wild card. You don't know what the hell they're gonna ask. I mean, I went before the Boston Concom one time for a job in Deer Island. And I had a question that absolutely stumped me. What happens if the barge sinks and the cement gets, gets all, uh, hardened up? To be honest, I did not have an answer for that one. What if the barge sinks?
Becomes a nice reef.
Yeah.
So let me, um, I'm not sure that we're gonna resolve this.
I think we ought to think about it a little further.
But I, you know my concerns, um, I'm not sure if it can be changed enough to assuage them, but. Let's move on to the next group, so I think we have a lot more pages that we need to go through, okay? Uh, so then we get into level two. But you brought the parking spaces down to six, I think it should be eight. That's off the top of my head.
Probably, yes, yes.
Do you know why it went down to six?
Um, well, we're looking at it, the smaller ones are three to five and then six to ten.
I just used the square, I just did the ratio of parking space to, you know what I mean?
It isn't always a square foot ratio though, John. A lot of, for some uses, like restaurants, for example, it's something other than square footage.
What, but for example, if someone were to question us and say, well, you went from twenty-five hundred square feet to two thousand, but then you went from ten spaces to six, what's your justification for that? I can justify eight on a per square foot, on a per square foot basis. But I don't know how to justify six, that's all.
I justify it only on the basis that it's one more than five. Right, yeah.
That's how we justify it.
Right.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Right.
Okay.
Before we, we've gotten to level two immediately, um, I'd just like to go back quickly to level one. Uh, on page two, line nineteen twenty. It says, with the approve, approved subdivision plan or earth removal permit. Now, what are we referring to there? Because as I've brought up at a number of meetings in the past, our current earth removal permit. Has to do with operating a, a gravel pit and or similar. And I don't think that that.
This is level two, David, what you're talking about.
This is level two, by the way.
Well, it's on page two.
Right, level two.
It's level two.
Level two starts at the bottom of page one.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry, okay, well, alright, so you're right, I, I missed that. Well, alright, so I still raise the question here. One, what are we talking about? And two, are we going to at some point address this whole issue of people? Both removing and replacing material on site?
Well, you mean on sites that have other uses like subdivisions and, and businesses or gravel pits?
Well, currently, currently, and I still don't know the answer to the question, the, the three mega houses on Newman Road seem to be. I, I don't know what's going on there, there are huge quantities of topsoil and other stuff being moved in and moved out and, you know. And I just wonder why that seems to be necessary.
Well, I think, I think earth removal should be addressed, because you're quite right, what we have is pretty old and tired. But what, for this document, it seems to me that that is an appropriate thing to have there. Because we're talking about commercial ventures. As opposed to a gravel pit. In other words, we're saying if it's a gravel pit, then the amount of scouring of the earth doesn't kick in, that's covered by gravel pit rules. Or a conservation commission if it's a wetland area.
Yeah, but.
Am I reading it wrong?
Well, what, let me, let me read this. So this is when, uh, th- these are criteria for level two. If you have a gr- grading or regrading and or clearing of land and or land development activity. Over an area of five thousand square feet or more. Except for work. Alright, except for work incidental to agricultural activity, clearing necessary for percolation and other site tests. Or work in conjunction with an approved subdivision plan or earth removal permit or stormwater permit. So it's saying you don't need to do this if you have a earth removal permit or a stormwater permit, because they assume you're doing something else.
Right, or you've already gone, you've already gone through a process.
Right, you've gone through a process, so that's not a problem, is it? I mean, I know what you're, you're referencing, and I don't know where you picked that up.
I don't read the stormwater permit as a alternate to site plan review. Because there's a whole pile of things the stormwater doesn't care about.
It's just been going.
That the planning board does.
It's, it's just saying, that's an exception.
I think what I'm saying, seeing here is. If you're gonna increase the impervious area as we generally do, if you're making the building and the parking area bigger. Then maybe the detention basin has to be reworked. What I'm reading here is that rework doesn't count towards the five thousand square feet.
Right.
Right.
Is that how you're reading it?
Right.
I've got a comment on the very next one, number five.
Five?
Uh, I don't know what the answer is, but I think we can work something out. It says impermeable, impervious surface area. Well, asphalt today is, there is, it's possible to do it. And actually, in many cases, it's cheaper, although nobody believes that. Than, than regular bitcon.
Right.
Uh, and so we need to say something other than impervious. Because it can be argued by somebody that pervious pavement is not impervious.
I got you.
And it would be hard to say they're wrong.
So, so get whatever you think should be.
We can work something out on that, Martha.
Now, now Martha and Linda, we had ten thousand square feet and you just lowered it to seventy-five hundred. And what was that based on?
Part, well, part of this, we were going through comments from some of the board members and I think one of the recommendations was to, to reduce, reduce it from ten thousand to something lower.
To five, I think.
To five, I think, and so we, we, talking it over, we felt that five was too small, that seventy-five hundred is reasonable.
And by the way, I, so, do we know what, what, where does this happen? On Pritchard's property and all of a sudden he takes an area in the back and all of a sudden he just covers it over with a ten thousand square foot parking lot? I mean, is that, is that what that, is that what this is meant to address?
Uh, it, it could be something like that, it could be.
I'm just trying to understand where, where does this happen? Where you get ten thousand square feet of impervious?
Well, one of the things that, um, you know, I think there's still a debate about, say, the ground mounted solar panels. And does that actually constitute impervious surface or not? Some, some people argue that it does, some people argue that it doesn't.
Well, the, as far as I know, the official argument, the guys that win the argument, say that it is not impervious surface. But in the same breath, they say, you gotta look at it carefully because it can be quite as damaging as if it were, it just isn't.
I think the obvious example here is the bus, school bus.
Slater, Salter, Salter?
No.
No, North Reading.
Oh, the, the, uh.
Where.
On Hanover Street.
Where we had an interesting balance between existing impervious. You know, the previous owner who operated a gravel business, interestingly. Um, had a lot of hot top. They really didn't increase that, but they had to increase it to a degree and the. And the rest of the stuff was pervious surface. But the, the numbers, as I remember, were relatively critical in the beginning because it looked as though it was gonna be a hell of a lot. And then it really turned out that, that they weren't.
So, but in this situation, we're recommending that it be decreased, that the size of it go from ten to seventy-five hundred because we have so much, where our good land is, it's near wetland. And so, that's a concern that we have. Okay. I think that's justifiable. So, I have all these other ones that are, six I have is the same. And then the addition here is seven and eight, which I fully support. I think they're great. And then the question is, we didn't bring forward, Martha, four and five from the first page? Not saying I want to, but four and five, which are the anti-traffic alterations, et cetera, we didn't bring them forward into level two. And I just, if we are going to do the level somewhat, it may be that it just logically flows that you are gonna have those problems and so therefore, but you're now having them as a potential criteria for, for, for action.
Wouldn't hurt at all to have them enumerated.
Then the only question I've got on the, on that as a criteria is that it's a bit vague. Read, read four and five on the first page?
On the first page.
Well, you would have to.
What does that mean?
If you carry them forward, you'd have to differentiate between potential.
I mean, I'm just concerned, it's just that it's any alterations to traffic flow patterns, including access egress, deliveries and pedestrian access. Now, that's pretty good, but it's just that what, what does that mean? Over what? Can you have a threshold?
Well, I guess that's what I was getting at. You'd have to have a threshold for a level one one or level two one.
Right, right. Because I think tho, those are good.
Those thresholds are very hard to pin down.
Yeah, yeah.
Too many variables there.
Right. I mean, you, I think you have to say.
I mean, it's better for us if we're not. I'm just thinking of approval process for us.
Well, I, I, I mean, forgive me for saying this, but this is an adult decision, right? I mean, it's one of those things where you have to make a reason.
Well, it just said, it says any alterations, any changes.
I think any is fine. Just do that. That is everything.
Right.
Okay.
And the next. Add, you know, an adjective and then you get into argument. Any significant, then you enter.
Yeah, any is.
Yes, any is better.
Part of what I need, don't you understand?
Right.
The next page or so, do we have to have these in the bylaw? Or can this simply be part of the rules and regulations?
Where are you?
That makes the bylaw grow substantially less than it otherwise would. I would think we could knock at least two, if not three pages out of our twelve here by sending stuff back to the bylaw. I mean, how you do the application right now for most of our bylaws, not in there. It's in the rules and regs to back them up.
So, basically, if you take out all of number four, procedure, and move that into the, the rules and regs.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was, what I was thinking. Submission requirements, how fast we have to respond, extensions of time.
So, where do you put them? Where do you put them, John?
In the rules and regs. We gotta have rules and regs to back this up.
Right, which we do now.
Which we have now, exactly, and which virtually everybody has.
Right, and I didn't wanna get into changing.
So, is it really just a matter of, of how you, of how you, I mean, it's still a nine-page document, one way or another.
Yeah. Right now, it's a twelve, it's a ten-page document.
Well, and, and you, you take three or four out and you simply say those are the rules and regs and it's.
Yeah, but the difference is.
The bylaws.
We don't have people screaming about tripling the size of, of regulations at a town meeting as opposed to just quietly doing it.
Right, but there's a more important difference, and that is that rules and regulations can be changed by a public hearing of the board.
Right.
They don't have to go to town meeting.
Not, not a big deal.
Any change in the bylaw has.
I think that makes sense.
I think this document should be the basic ten commandments. And, you know, with whom and why and why not.
So, beginning with four. And, and by the way, I think, I just wanna say that I'm hoping everybody's okay with this, but the, where, is that it? No, where did we come from? Where you reduced the period, oh, it's on the next page.
Well, if we take four out, then my concern would, would be picked up anyway, and that is under four, whatever it is, four, I guess, D four, which is line twenty-three on page three. Approvals subject to any site plan and design performance conditions, blah, 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 blah. Town staff may deem necessary. We would need, if we are going to have the board actually vote on, you know, if we decide.
Right, right, right. No, I got you.
We would need to add conditions imposed by the planning board.
Yeah. But I, I will say that in, in this section, section four, it's tight, I mean, it's, it's both, you know, I don't mean tighter in terms of shorter, but it's clearer in terms of what a person needs to do and, and how that person is going to be judged. So, I think it's, I really like what you've done with this section. And, I mean, I, I don't, the waiver of submission, I mean, you have new things like waiver of submission requirements, which I, I didn't see in the other one, and I think that's very good. And I certainly applaud, we're basically going from a hundred and fifty-five days to sixty days in terms of the review. And I wanna make sure that everybody is comfortable with that because I think that's great. I mean, I think that's.
Yeah, I, I think a hundred and fifty-five is way too much.
It forces us, it forces us into moving quickly. And I think that it serves the process well to accelerate it that much.
Well, there again, with staff doing the digging.
Right.
Much of this, it's gonna be a lot easier. We're not waiting two weeks for the next hearing.
So, are we gonna take out four and five?
No, I think five should stay in, David.
I would leave five myself.
Because that's, that's the guts of it in a way. This shows you what you've gotta do.
I think five we have to leave in.
I would say, I mean, you basically are taking page, most of three.
Well, I think.
Starting at four, so it's.
I would say basically four.
Just take all of four.
And just look very carefully to see where baby isn't going over the boundary.
Yeah, I mean, there are some things that might, we might wanna keep in the bylaw.
Right, exactly.
You know, things like the waiver of submission requirements.
Can we ask you to take a crack at that, or do you, can you do that with Linda?
Yeah, what I'll do is, is take out anything that really seems procedural.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I hate the numbering system, too.
Yeah, because that's why I was looking, and I really didn't realize five was.
But there's other things that are of the essence of the philosophy of site plan review.
Right. So, I'll take a crack at that.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
No, it does get warm. It does get warm in here.
Oh, let me turn the fans on.
A little bit.
So, so Martha will go through four and see if there's something that we need to keep in, such as decision criteria, whatever it might be. But most of these things are modifiers of what went before. And so then let's get to page six of ten, decision criteria. We have added some here, but I'm, I know that I did look at a number of the ones that were sent by Brabowski and others, and I, I, most towns have a lot more than this.
Well, under A, you know, the ten to fifteen lines range, I think we should say something about traffic congestion. That is not mentioned there. It's mentioned in other places, but I think our criteria under the minimize, minimize traffic congestion.
Okay, just to make sure we don't have that as a separate item, huh?
I think it may be, it may be mentioned for the wrong.
Well, we talked about maximizing pedestrian.
No, yeah.
But that doesn't address traffic congestion.
No, it doesn't. So.
Add six.
Add six. Minimize traffic, traffic congestion. Well, I will say that in the time that I've been in this town, I have not had.
Right.
Traffic congestion, except for at the bonfire.
Well, if you walk, then there's no problem.
Do you know?
People don't drive out across your lawn to get away from.
They must do that to you, right?
Huh?
They must do that to you.
They must park all over the lawn.
We got a couple of guys from the highway department parking our access road to our field. And so, people just drive around them.
So, does anybody wanna comment on any one of these?
I would just, just a question. In the general vicinity of, of C, there's, there are utility companies, utility agencies that, whose rules and regulations we have to, we have to follow. We have to follow them anyway, so I'm not sure it has to be in here. But if we're saying, we're saying provide adequate stormwater management and other utilities.
I, I'd put a question mark here about what, what supersedes.
What what?
What, what controls here? And if we have it in here, I assume the stormwater management bylaw is the controlling. We're just making sure that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need C at all, to be honest, because everybody else, you can't, you can't hook into the water, water system unless you obey their rules. They won't hook you up, and you're not gonna get power unless you've paid your light bill and all these things.
Well, in a way, though, John, might, it might not be dissimilar to when a bank is closing a loan.
Yeah.
And they say, do I have all of the decisions from all the parts before I make my decision? And they wanna see the information from the insurance company, wanna see information from the city. They wanna see the informa, did they get this permit? Did they get? And maybe that's what this is.
Yeah, maybe that's what it means.
So, as part of your decision, you wanna make sure that that's in place? Is that what you had in mind by any chance?
No, what, what I'm, I'm, I'm sort of questioning whether we need that at all. And, and it's just one more thing we can take out if it's duplicative.
David, do you have a second?
Things are gonna happen anyway.
What, John's?
I'm sorry, I, I.
You're in someplace else?
I was someplace else.
Forget it.
I don't, I don't feel strongly about this, if I was raising a question.
All right. I, I, I had simply, on this issue, simply said, is storm, is this redundant? That was my question, and John has kind of said he thought it might be.
I've said similar, something similar, yeah.
Okay. So, maybe that's a Ginny question, when you get to that point, Martha.
I, I just wondered why, why it's only exiting from a site.
Yeah, entering causes quite as much trouble sometimes.
Just as much a problem.
Where are you? Wait, 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 wait.
D, maximize pedestrian vehicle safety both on the site and egressing from it.
So, egressing from it and entering.
I would think entering and exiting.
Entering.
Egressing.
What you wanna have is access to the site, on the site, and egressing from it. The, so, you get there, you're on the site, and you egress. Those three items.
Anyway, just entering there. Okay. Are we happy with the next few?
I am.
I'm happy with the rest of the page.
I would go to I and simply ask, I'm not suggesting yes, but ask, do we want to include the word architecture? Or, you know, architectural style?
Am I allowed to speak on this subject, Martha?
No, well, wait a minute.
I'll let you speak.
No, no, no.
I, I, I'm very happy with this.
Okay, I'm just.
And because this is obviously one of my issues, I think this does it.
Okay, all right.
If we had a design review board in town, that's where it belongs, probably not the planning board.
Anyway.
Well, right, no, I, I, I would agree, but, you know, it's simply, it does appear in many other site plan review criteria.
Yeah, but what you.
That is, I think, fraught with peril.
No, but there's language in here that gets into these issues, and you can talk about materials and scale and relationships to neighborhoods, and that's what you need.
I mean, you got enough in here for something outrageous being proposed.
Yeah, this is, this is good.
Like a building with four stories and no windows.
I think this is fine.
Right, okay. So, next one, which is.
What, groundwater?
Yeah, water. There's nothing in here that says they have to show that they have adequate water. And many communities insist that you demonstrate that you can confidently expect to either have a public water supply because the one runs, you know, down the street, or that you know that you're gonna be able to.
Again, you're not allowed to build anything unless you have utilities tied up.
Is that really a site plan review issue, though?
I, I don't know.
The location of the water line maybe is, and the size of it is, but do you have it or don't you? Sam's not gonna issue a building permit to a building that isn't.
There's, there's both things. They have to have water, they have to have sewer.
Yeah.
One way or another.
Yeah.
And Sam doesn't.
And Sam runs.
And that's a, that's a, that's, that's a, that's a technical Sam issue, I think.
I think, yeah.
Okay, does he get into whether that affects groundwater?
I don't know.
What, the water?
Yeah, well, if somebody drills a well and they have a business which consumes a lot of water, is it gonna affect the groundwater table?
I don't think, from a practical sense, nobody gets into that, although we certainly should be in some place, in some parts of town, yeah.
Because, for example, on Route one fourteen in North Andover, they, somebody wanted to put in a car wash, interestingly, in what seemed to be a marsh. And the only way they could put it in, not because they were in essentially a freshwater marsh, but because of water supply, was that they recycled all.
Right, of the water.
Of the water.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, so I mean.
And most of these car washes, that's what they do.
Yeah, the one in Newbury Port says that it does that, for example, I think.
Well, strictly speaking, that would be, that would be a board of health issue because they, they say gray's overwhelming.
Well, it's, fine, but one of the things we always have to be careful of is saying, well, somebody else is gonna do it. If you put it in here, they can say.
It's a reminder that somebody has to do it, yeah.
You know, I'm not saying in this specific instance, but it is a reminder for somebody to be asked the question and for them to say, oh, yes, we've demonstrated that we do.
Why don't we just have a sentence saying all utilities, just enumerate the ones that are in, that are in question? That it will have served by water or a well, approved by the board of health, and a septic system approved by the board of health.
Well, in, in the normal process of putting a deal together in this town, don't they, don't they have their well and, and septic worked out before they come to us?
Oh, yeah. Oh, they should. They don't always, but they should.
Or at least it's going parallel.
They're not gonna buy the lot if they can't.
They can't, they can't.
They wouldn't buy it if there were no water on it.
Proof of, proof of water and sewer, something like that. I, I'm okay with adding that.
Yeah, that works for me.
And then the next one, that really kind of concerns me because it's about as broad as its long. Maximize property enhancement with landscaping and other site amenities. I don't know what the hell that means.
Make it look pretty.
Well, yeah, but it's sort of like, that, that becomes like putting two shrubs in front of the foundation. I, I, you know, I mean, it's, I think it, for me, we either should be a little more specific.
How are we gonna specific? Say, you have to put six trees, you have to put a few bushes.
No, no, no. Well, I, I'm wondering, you know, what they're saying is maximize, what, what the hell is property enhancement?
Well, that's what we're gonna decide. That's, this is telling them that, you know, you gotta make this look pretty, and we're gonna give you the parameters of what, you know, if we give you, if us a plan with no prettiness on it, we're gonna say, no, we want more pretty.
Well, so what are other site amenities?
Well, that's up to us to decide.
Yeah, but that's, that's, you know, that's, that's the trouble, I think, with this one. It's this huge.
Walls, like the guy on Route one, he was gonna put in these nice walls that he told us he was gonna do to, to, that's a site amenity.
Right.
He fooled us.
Yeah.
Well, actually, it's funny because somebody started repairing a wall on Orchard Street, and it's been like the flu.
Oh, I see that.
Everybody is now doing. Everybody is now doing re, either rebuilding their wall.
Oh, then, then there's signs about, you know, expert wall repair, and, oh, yeah.
And the new house built a wall, and the old house, I mean, it's really funny. But anyway, you come back to this more seriously.
By the way, I, I'm, I, I'm somewhat partial to what David is saying, but I don't know what else you can say.
Yeah.
Would you go through the various documents and see if someone else was a little more articulate than this, and, and send us, or insert it if you, if you can? But I, I'm not as bothered by it as David is, 'cause I think it, it, it's just a criteria, it says.
Well, I do think that unfortunately, it leads to all kinds of things that I'm very opposed to, and that is hundreds of square feet of lawn for no reason, da-da, 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 all kinds of stuff that's going on.
Problem is, you, you, right. What Linda just said, we can't start saying, we need eighteen trees.
No, I know.
The bonsai thing, and you need what?
No, but.
Then we get into personal taste about landscape architecture.
Right, well, then also we get into what is an enhancement, and, and what is a, I wonder whether it should be almost a negative, like, don't trash it.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Well, when it comes, when they, they know that they're gonna have to present us with a plan that shows some enhancement to the property, and then we decide.
I'm listening to my real estate broker here.
Okay, okay, all right, so.
I'm listening to my real estate broker.
But, all right.
Anyway, no, I asked Martha to look in, in the various documents.
What I see is enhancement, in a way, if you don't do anything to the property, okay? Are, are you enhancing it because you've, you've trashed it? You know, there's all those sorts of strange issues that, that come up.
But it's something they know that we're going to be looking at when they give us the plan.
That's right, and if they have done other kinds of things, you say, well, you, you get a, you get a demerit for that.
All right, yes, okay.
Next page.
I, I will not be on the board tonight, that's.
I'm gonna ask when it's gonna be there.
So, on the next page, which is, I have seven of ten, we get into conditions of approval. And again.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, what they've done here is they've taken one paragraph that was hard to read, disaggregated it, and made three paragraphs. And I think it's, or, yeah, three paragraphs, four paragraphs. So, I think that reads a lot better. But it's ba- basically, they've taken everything that we had in the old document, that was one of these, you know, hundred.
Those things that roll without end.
You couldn't read?
Yeah.
And they just disaggregated it. I think it looks good.
The only thing, again, is that if we don't go with.
She's had enough.
I haven't. That's a wonderful audience.
Done a great job, Yvonne.
D should, we should take out town planer if we don't do that route.
Right, right. But we'll, we'll, we'll take this up again in two weeks.
Right. Now, lapse.
Yes, and I was intrigued with this new word.
Where?
Well, lapse, 'cause it's, it's, it's the same idea of what we had in the original document, but we've come up with a new word instead of, I forget what you had.
Good word.
And so we've come up with lapse. It is a good word.
Yeah.
Well, I would say is two years too long.
Right, we have a comment here, we, should we shorten it?
Yeah, I, I really think so.
What's too long?
Two years.
Two years, it's too long.
We thought it was.
But let me ask you, do we, we don't have enough experience in this town. We have two projects that we've, three now, that we've done through site plan review. We think one of them came out okay, we think the other one is not okay, and we think, we don't know what's gonna happen with the third.
No, but the, the school bus thing was site plan review too.
Right.
Right, that's what I meant. And we think that came out okay. I mean, in terms of.
Oh, sure, yeah, it did.
There were, there were a few hiccups, but in, in general, it was, it was good. And, and keep in mind, the two years is to completion. It's not to start, it's to completion. So, if you're looking at actually.
Making that to one year, that's really tight.
That's tight, eighteen months.
I don't think that's.
I don't know how, I don't know how you do that.
But there is a discretion to extend.
Right. See, I, I, I don't have a problem with the two years. And what I was gonna say was, just because we've had this one horrific problem with this one, I mean, I get the impression, I mean, John, you would know, but that's unusual, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, definitely. Oh, especially somebody building for their own account, come on.
You know, we, we just.
Nobody does that.
We just don't see that.
I have never, I have never ever seen that sort of situation happen with a site, an industrial site.
How long has he, has it been so far with him?
A year.
It's been over a year.
A year and, uh, uh, it was November.
It's not even started.
November of twelve, and all he's done is.
Well, then, do we need a start, that the project must be started within twelve months?
Yeah.
That would be reasonable, right?
That's what I.
Now, you just, you grimaced, why?
Well, no, I was just thinking, if he's got an end date of two years, doesn't, doesn't that.
Start within twelve months and finish two years after that.
Yeah.
Oh, two years after that, so you're actually giving me three years.
Well, in a way. But it must start, I mean.
Why wouldn't you want, why wouldn't you want him to start right away?
Must.
Well, financing would be one. He, he's not gonna get commitments on financing until he has his permits in place.
Right.
And all of a sudden, we have an oh-eight, October of oh-eight happened. Everything, everything changes.
If we'd had twelve months, we'd have one-on-one turnpike to rights. Because he really, we could say to him, you haven't started on, you know, essentially.
It depends on how you define start. In a lot of cases, it's, it's substantially.
Started, he cleared the land.
It's substantial use, is what they say, and, and then he was substantially using it.
He does not have a building permit.
No, 'cause he doesn't have a building.
Okay. So, so if we said that a building permit has to be granted within six months, and then the building has to be completed X years after that, two years after that?
But what if it's a project without a building?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of building permits that don't ever get built.
What would that be?
Well, say somebody was putting in a parking lot that didn't have a building. So, you know, say it was something like the Kentway Fields.
What, is he gonna get some kind of a permit, though?
Wouldn't be a building permit.
No, but something. What does he get? So, I'm just after a building permit or a.
He doesn't get much, does he?
Right, for something like that, he'd have to get an order of conditions.
Yeah.
Notice to pre-, does somebody give him a notice to proceed?
No, we don't do.
No, no.
I don't think so.
I think that it should just stay at the, the two years.
Just keep it at two years.
Keep it at the two years. It gives him two years to finish the project.
Finish the project.
Not to start it, not, 'cause now it's, you, you have to start within two years, right?
No, it's actually, it, it actually does say you have to finish in two years, but it's, it's.
So, this has to be finished within two years.
Uh, uh, and a series of words that are frequently used in construction contracts are prosecute diligently.
Yeah.
Which doesn't mean that you just make a mess and walk away from it for six months.
Right.
It's.
Yeah, that's the only thing that worries me in a way, is that if it's two years with nothing that happens before that, so, so, so you're gonna wait two years before you do anything to somebody who clearly.
Isn't gonna do anything.
As for whatever reason, good, bad, or indifference, fall on their face.
And the deals that, you know, the town did with the two schools, there, there were performance timetables. And why couldn't we have some performance ti- timetables in here? Anything? Something.
Something that helps us. Can we legally ask to see evidence of financing? It would be obviously financing subject to.
They're gonna know ahead of time whether they're getting their financing, their findings would be.
You'd like to think so, but.
But I'll bet you this guy didn't.
Our friend out there doesn't have his financing yet, as far as I know, for the building. He's telling Doug that he.
I would love to ask that of Ginny, because it's, you know, when, when you're selling land, you always have that ability to do that. It's a deal that you're doing, I'm doing a deal with you, I'm selling the land, and I'm the town, and you're buying it, I have every right to ask you.
For finance.
For finance.
Absolutely.
But, but. If. Well, I do know, you know, in, so the, so the ma- ma- major projects, if you need anything from the city or town, they have the right to, they, I don't know if they have the right, but they ask.
They ask for it.
They ask for it, and they get it. So, if you're getting a variance, you get it. You say, all right, we're gonna, if, in other words, I'm giving you this, then I need that. Or they take something else, like affordable housing. I mean, they, that's the way they do it. Let's try to put it in.
You want me to check with Ginny?
Yeah, check with Ginny.
Yeah, I think there's some merit to tying that in, 'cause it's another arrow in our quiver. Because if the bank starts beating up on the guy, you know.
Yeah, I'm fairly sure I did see that in somebody's site plan review in, in a major.
What was that?
Financing.
So, did he buy that land for cash?
Uh, me?
Did he buy the land for cash?
Uh, no, I think he got financing for the land, I believe. Did you not tell me that he, I think? Um. That you'd seen it somewhere?
Might have checked on the mortgage, might have gone to the registry.
At one point, but I believe that that's only for land, because he told us, Doug and I, some couple, three months back, that he was chasing down financing for the building.
But did Legulis take back the mortgage?
I'm sorry?
Did Legulis take back a mortgage, maybe?
I don't, no, it's not with Legulis.
I can't, I can't believe he'd do that.
Yeah, I thought, I thought Angelo had said something about, um, he needed to get the building done by next July or something because of his financing.
Ah, could be.
So, there was some, some tie-in with.
There are, unfortunately, a lot of stories that come out of Angelo.
But usually, when he goes to the bank, the bank's gonna wanna know what he's doing with the land.
Oh, yeah.
And they're gonna finance that also.
Yeah.
Okay.
They wanna see that something's being built.
So, on the lapse.
They wanna stop getting, generating income to pay the landlord.
Issue, we'll keep it at two years, and Martha is gonna check with Ginny about, um, two things. Maybe tightening it up and getting some start dates for, or evidence of, of movement forward, and one thing would be financing. So, see if she's okay with either one of those. Okay?
John, I got a couple of things that, in that last paragraph, number seven.
In lapse, yep.
Third line up from the bottom, for good cause. I think we might think about adding, in the sole opinion of the planning board. I mean, what he could consider a good, a good excuse may not be something. Joyce, what do you think?
That's fine. I would put that in. I used to use that all the time.
Yeah, it's not unusual.
No.
No, it's not, and that's where, yeah.
The other thing I would think is that, we, we talked a meeting or two back about right of entry, and this document, somewhere else in this document, it basically says that the, our inspector can enter the property, town officials can.
I saw, I was looking at a couple of things today, and, and there's a very good paragraph about right of entry.
Okay.
That the planning board can go in, you know.
It has to be out there. It's, and you make it a condition of the approval. And that way, he cannot hang out a no trespassing sign.
I thought we did have.
Because it is totally insane to inspect by appointment.
Well, we have, we have here on page nine of ten inspections. From time to time, the planning board or its agents or representatives may enter and inspect the premises, subject to the decision. Now, do we need to have do notice?
I'm, I'm, no, I don't think we do, do, need do notice at all. I do not want do notice. I'm adamant. What did they say in that television program? I'm unanimous in that. Are you being served?
All right. All right, so we have that, so we've got that.
Well.
But I, I, I think maybe the, the right of entry paragraph might be, that language might be a little clearer to, to say we can go in, it's not just inspections, you can go in anytime.
So, a no argument. At any time, and that this is a condition of the permit, and if the do not want us on board, then forget about building the job.
Well, see, what I liked about where you have it now is the inspections really follow that whole new ses- sections you have on the performance guarantee, which I think is very good.
I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I'd leave that alone, frankly. I think that's fine. I would just stick in.
Add one more paragraph?
I'd throw this in under conditions of approval.
Okay.
Which really. There's a control call at that point.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no inspector in the world that has to, has to ask permission.
So, so you would have, because you do repeat something similar back on item ten, right, from time to time?
Yeah, I think that's fine. I, I'd leave it there. I don't care if it is repeated.
Want something else in here?
I want it as a condition of approval.
Okay.
I mean, I can't believe anyone in his right mind is gonna deny approval anyway.
No, they're not.
But unless it's really nailed down here, they can. And it takes a court order to overturn that.
Okay.
So, I've been told.
It okay with page seven? Page eight, starting with modifications to approve site plans, which is new. This is a new provision. And then performance guarantees for level two.
I would throw in just once, a couple of suggestions on, under A. I would be inclined to let the contingency be our business, we'll make that call. Let him just give us the number, broken down. I think we wanna see a breakdown so we can evaluate it. And, you know, if he puts a contingency on it, and he think, we think it's okay, fine, if, if.
So, you're saying, don't put fifteen percent?
I, yeah, I'd leave the fifteen percent off, a contingency period. I'd just say, like, a broke, a breakdown in normal estimating fashion.
With a contingency.
Yeah. I mean, a professional estimator is gonna break it down in a meaningful way. That's what they do.
Now, we have changed the language here in the beginning. As a condition of site plan approval, the planning board shall require that a performance bond deposit money, instead of may.
Right, we, we talked, that was a purposeful change.
I, I, I thought it would be purposeful, so what was your, so what was your thinking?
That, that they, they would take it seriously, that they would know that this is something that.
So, for example, we just went through a discussion on that with our latest applicant. And we didn't say she shall, we said, you know what, you don't have to do it. So, it would have meant that we, she would have had to place a bond.
We can wa-, oh, we can, if it's in zoning, we can't waive it, can we? If it's in our rules and regulations, we always can waive it if we consider the risk smaller.
Well, it could be a waiver request, and we've, we've given them the opportunity to, to waive. Yeah, I mean, it's not a dimensional variance or anything like that. It would be a request for your requirements of the.
So, you just need some kind of a waiver provision and keep the shall there?
In the sole discretion of the planning board.
There you go.
How do you feel about the shall?
I have no problem with it, as long as you have a waiver.
I, I'm just thinking of the practicality, because I like to have the ability to say, as we just said with.
That it's not necessary.
You know what, with you, it wasn't necessary.
Well, given that this is largely a commercial situation that we're, we're foretelling, maybe we don't wanna be that hard-nosed. Maybe this is a case of do the may, make ourselves look warm and furry, and then nail them if we have a problem.
I mean, I, I mean, let's step back. If we hit, let's think about sixty-seven, sixty-nine new report. What, what's her name again? Marie?
Chrissy.
Chrissy. Had we, had shall in there, I suppose, how is it set? How, how do you determine the size of it? It's, it's the, uh, how does, how do you, how would we determine the size of that bond?
It would basically be.
Based on the estimate.
Based on the estimate of the site, site development costs. We have taken out, and the other thing we did here is we took out the building. In our existing bylaw, the performance bond covers the building. And this does not cover the building, and that's because in everyone I read, Newburyport's, Westner, everyone, they didn't have it in. Um, and so I think that's correct.
Almost wasn't intended to cover the building.
I know, but it's there, so it's, it's a good one, because we'll be giving it out. Um, and I think it's appropriate to do it for all site costs, so.
Could you put language which said shall be required? Could you put language which said shall be required to determine?
What?
What?
Shall be required to determine if, um, or shall be, uh, you know, shall determine if a bond is required. In other words, you go through the process.
Okay, as a condition of site plan approval, the planning board shall determine whether, whether, which is, which is may.
Yeah. But no, 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 it is-
Yeah, but the shall sounds rather than that.
But it, it is may, but it's, you see what, it's something different.
Shall determine.
In other words, you must do it. You must go through the exercise.
I think that's fine.
Which exercise?
You shall de-
Coming up with an estimate?
No, no, shall determine whether a bond is necessary.
Yes.
You know, why are we making him pay?
May not be.
Get an estimate done?
May not be, may not be. No, we're deter- we shall determine.
The original suggestion was may. What's wrong with that? Just leave it alone.
No, because then it, it, it leaves it vague as to whether you actually talk about it or not. It, it, it's a possibility.
This is actually a question of semantics in many respects, but it's the difference between a passive verb and an active one.
Exactly.
Right.
Right, so what you're suggesting is that there's a clear process that-
Yes.
And you're forcing the planning board to do something, whereas, right, and we said, well, we may.
Yeah, I'm saying essentially, we're providing, as it were, an item on a checklist.
I, I say, I say take this language down and let's take a look at it.
So are we gonna make him do an estimate or not?
No, we're gon- no.
We're not, okay.
No.
What are we doing?
We're gonna-
We're gonna determine.
We're putting it on ourselves.
We're gonna decide.
Unless otherwise waived by the planning board and holder in part.
Whatever, whatever that language may be.
Catholic and shall.
Anything else on page eight?
Yes, I got two things on B, which will take care of themselves, but I don't think we wanna have to get ourselves into a discussion later. No engineer is going to certify anything if he has half a brain. His insurance company will chop his head off, and they will furthermore not pay any claims. So, um, I, we don't want us to use the word certification. A statement is okay. He can make a statement. Certifying implies a level of certainty, forgive the pun, that just doesn't exist in these situations.
So, so with the statement, is that the, that construction has been done in accordance with the plans?
Yeah, just statement, just substitute statement for certification.
That construction is consistent with, fine.
Yep, that is, uh, that is, s- statement is fine. They do, we do that all the time.
All right.
Certification, we never do.
I get it.
Well, we just never do it.
So the heading of this paragraph should be plan, statement sounds a little weird.
Let's, a good point.
Plan approval?
Verification, how's that?
Yeah.
Yeah, verification.
Verification works.
Right.
Uh, the other, I don't know where it is. Oh, it's on the next page, never mind. Record drawing as opposed to as-built. Uh, one does not use the term as-built anymore.
Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's used all the time, but it is not a recommended use. The problem was that people would be nailing whoever did the as-built on the ba- because, well, you, you know, there's a wire out of place. Uh, the, the, the cold water comes in here as opposed to here. That's not a way, right, those things are trivial. But if you simply call it record, then you're not undertaking for absolute veracity of every single thing that's on the drawing. I mean, there's some things that are important, and there's other things that are not. And people were using the as-built language to nail people for being wrong on things that didn't matter in the slightest.
So, um-
That's under thirteen A.
Is it thirteen A?
That would be thirteen A, and the, the same thing applies there for certification, use the word statement.
Well, I wanted to ask both Martha and John this, because I read this, and I thought that maybe in thirteen, that is it likely we're gonna get those kind of plans, I mean, whatever you wanna call them? And is that necessary in order to release, um, the funds and let the project proceed?
I would think that'd be a damn good idea, yeah.
Now, I know that the but I know oftentimes you don't get as-built until like two years later.
Well, that's-
Until they're built.
Well, oh, yeah. Well, that's the idea. You don't, you don't get record drawings before they're built.
It's the permanent occupancy permits shall be issued for any-
So they can get a temporary, they can get a temporary occupancy.
I misread it, I misread it.
Yeah.
That's fine.
It, you know, you'll never get them if you don't force them to do it, 'cause it's a major pain in the neck. Nobody wants to do it. They wanna go on to the next job.
Okay.
It's like pulling teeth normally.
Okay. And the only other question I had on either one of these, how much time does it take? Is it Sam that has to do all this?
Do all what?
Uh, review, review the as-bills, or do you review the as-bills?
Well, I would think it would be a planning department function to review them.
I would think since the planning-
If it's where plans would be concom, definitely, and I think we'd-
Right.
Some more that would be interested also.
But I, I think if-
But the occupancy permit comes from Sam.
The occupancy permit comes from Sam, yes.
So he'll put pressure on the staff to get the information to them, because the applicant, okay, I got it.
Um, and there's a process, there's a form that, that applicants will take around for sign-offs from various boards and departments.
Fire department's happy, wire inspector's happy.
Gas, all that.
Okay.
But I, I would assume that probably I would, or whoever, would review, um-
Okay.
Because it was a site plan review decision.
What about twelve?
Where are you?
I think the fine is too low.
That's much too low.
I think it should be three hundred.
Per day?
Yeah.
It was three hundred in a couple of the other documents that I read. I, I don't, I don't have a good sense for this. It's per day, for each offense. That can add up to a lot of money.
Well, yeah, okay, it can, but the point is, you, you wanna tell them that you're serious.
It's costing you fifteen hundred dollars a day.
Could render a lot of money.
Right, yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, you, you have latitude as to when it starts, a whole bunch of things.
And it also says not more than, so it doesn't, even if it's, if you say three hundred, it doesn't have to be that.
Right, exactly.
Normal, normal practice, if, if we were hiring somebody to build a barn and all that stuff out at one oh one, if, normal practice is, we'd have an inspector. The guy would miss something one day, come back the next, holy catfish, this is terrible. You don't start fining the guy, you just tell him that this is not acceptable and order him to fix it.
Right.
But what I'm saying is-
Tell him that if he doesn't, everything beyond it is unacceptable.
Right, and, and if he doesn't do so in the manner that we're currently dealing with-
Then we fine him. If he wants to leave it there, he gets fined.
Yeah.
But I, I, I would think that we would want to imply that we, he's gonna have an opportunity to correct it. If he fails to correct.
Yeah, right.
As opposed to just doing it.
Well, it's like, you, we get to define what the offense is. You see what I'm saying? In other words, when the offense starts and, but if it's only a hundred-
I see what you're saying.
Up to a hundred dollars, that's all.
So if he, if he refuses it, it's an offense. If he just screws up, it's not.
Right.
Okay.
He still may be fined.
What's that?
It says may, it says may.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so let's, you wanna change it?
Three hundred.
All right.
Martha, what was the hundred dollar amount put in originally? How many years ago?
This is new.
This is new, totally?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any penalty right now.
On any other, we looked at, was it a hundred or a greater amount? Any other site plan review documents from other towns?
This can't, I can't remember where it came from, but it came from one of them, and I don't know how old it was.
All right, so you might wanna check and make sure we're not out of order, out of line here. Anything else on page nine of ten?
Nope. Good.
Page ten of ten. Whoa, nothing there.
I'm wondering whether the last item, fourteen B, should be fees and fines shall be governed and set by the planning board. In other words, to, to stress that we're the people who determine this and-
Fees and penalties.
Penalties, okay, yeah, that's good.
Okay. Unnecessary roughness.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
What did Tom want to do? I didn't even see it. He could find a hundred thousand dollars penalty.
See, I didn't, I never saw what he did.
I didn't see what he did either, but they, and he paid it gladly.
Well, he's making five million a year.
I know. Hundred thousand dollars.
Coach for the Steelers?
Who did this?
The coach for the Steelers?
Oh, yeah.
What did he do?
I don't know.
I don't know either.
I have no idea.
Did something.
Something on the return, return of the team, I don't know what it was, but he must have sent something to a player.
He went onto the field.
He went onto the field, what, he tried to stop him?
And he tried-
And tried to tackle him?
He tried, well, that's what, who did that years ago?
Yes.
Well, somebody, one of the Jets guys once tripped a player.
Right.
Was that Buddy Ryan?
No, it wasn't Orion, believe it or not.
No. No, it was, it was the Ohio State coach years ago who went out and tackled the guy.
Oh, that was, no.
Like twenty years ago.
No, last year, somebody tripped a player.